Really starting to get homesick and was feeling very tired most of the time. It was hard to get sleep there. And, you know, we were traveling to many different hostels a lot. And I would, I had difficulty adjusting to it because of the differences in the way that the rooms are laid out there and just general unfamiliarity with it. But I knew that if I were to take that sort of negative outlook or, you know, bad sleep and let it impact how I was enjoying the days there, I wouldn't get a fulfilling experience out of it. And so I always tried in the mornings to just put any of the difficulty behind me and just approach the day with a positive outlook on what we were going to do and try to appreciate every, you know, trip we went on there. Every moment of it, I guess, I wanted to appreciate as much as possible because if I were to just let myself get caught up in, you know, bad sleep, it would probably really harm my enjoyment of the experience. And one thing I think people get wrong about optimism is that optimistic people or people with positive outlooks on life are sort of blissfully ignorant to the issues in the world. But I think it's more of an active choice to approach the world with a positive attitude because a lot of those things in life are really out of your own control. And so if you spend all your time stressing about them or putting your energy towards thinking about how bad they are, you're not going to really get anywhere within life. So I think just approaching situations, even if they're not a good situation, with a positive outlook, it's, it's a choice. It's not just a way of thinking. Another thing I do is I work at OCA Media, and I find that to be a really rewarding experience because not only is it, you know, a good job, I get paid for it, and, you know, it's just a good experience to have, but also because I feel like I'm working for a greater purpose. A lot of jobs you can get at this age, I feel it's hard to see the direct impact of what you do, but being able to work for somewhere where, you know, grandparents, relatives of people playing games or any sort of Oregon community event, there's always going to be people out there that are going to want to see that, want to see their family succeed. And so being able to provide that service for people, I feel like feels like a very rewarding thing for me.
Ever hear the one about the frog? Put a frog in a pot of boiling water and it'll jump right out. But put a frog in a pot of cool water and slowly heat it up and that frog will boil. It's a lie, but as a metaphor for us and all that we go through as veterans.
Too many real-world experiences.
It's a story that rings true. We make excuses for how we feel. We push everything down. We tell ourselves the lie that it's easier to stay in that boiling water, to disconnect. And some days, maybe it is, but you've never been interested in easy. Reaching out is hard, do it anyway. You're not alone. You've got this. You are not a frog.
Find resources at va.gov/reach.
You've done the hard part. You quit smoking. Now do the easy part and get scanned for lung cancer. If you smoked, you may still be at risk, but early detection could save your life. Talk to your doctor and learn more at savedbythescan.org.
Thank you so much.
Fostering a pet for a friend or neighbor can keep families together. Learn more at petsandpeopletogether.org.
Okay, you guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay, it's five o'clock. I'll call to order the Village Board of Oregon meeting for Monday, April 21st, 2025. Just a reminder to trustees to speak into your microphones if the clerk would call the roll.
Higgins?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
Knipfer?
Here.
Manke?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Van Campen?
Here. Item three, I'm going to separate these without objection. Approval of April 7th, 2025, Village Board Meeting Minutes, if correct, and correction of mistakes, if any. Tim and Amanda, questions, comments?
Higgins and Amanda?
That's correct. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of April 15th, Village Board Meetings, if correct, and correction of mistakes, if any. Amanda and Tom? Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, public comments. Public appearances, comments, communications, items for discussion or possible action. Public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Is anyone here for public comments? Public comments? See none. Okay, moving on. Without objection, we are going to move to item seven, Planning Commission, as Sonia, I think I saw her walk in.
She's here.
Oh, there you are. Is here to help us out, as Elise, of course, is absent tonight. So we'll start there. So item 781, Ordinance Number 25-02, an ordinance amending section 17-718 sub 3 of the Village of Oregon Municipal Code relating to exposed metal fasteners. Commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. We have a motion by Jason, second by Tim. We have something in the packet. Do you have questions, comments beyond that? If you address those to Sonia. Seeing none. Okay, we have a motion by Jason, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 72, Ordinance Number 25-03, an ordinance amending section 17-203, section 12.04, and section 17-2, excuse me, 17-206 sub A, sub AA, and 17-206 sub A, sub BB of the Village of Oregon Municipal Code relating to poultry and beankeeping. Commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Motion by Tim, second by Jason. Questions? Tim?
I'd just like to make a comment that this is an ordinance that's been in the works for several months. And one of the things I love about it is the way the community came in, spoke their mind, and actually reshaped how this ordinance turned out in kind of the way democracy's supposed to work. People came to the meetings, spoke passionately, but also respectfully, and shared a lot of information. I'd also think it's a little disappointing that Elise couldn't be here because she worked really hard on this. So I wanted to commend her for all the hours she put in meeting with people. And I think what came out of it was a really good ordinance that really reflects positively on our community.
Amanda, please.
I, maybe I missed it, but did I see anything in here about a number of birds being grandfathered in for the chicken? Like, can people keep the ones they have? That's...
There is no specific grandfathering written into the ordinance.
Okay, so if a person has more chickens than are allowed, what happens?
They are technically an illegal land use. It's not, they do not enjoy legal conforming, legal non-conforming status at this time because the existing code does not actually allow for the use. So there is no legal use right now occurring. And usually that would be legal non-conforming when the ordinance changes. But at this point, it would still be illegal non-conforming. So in that case, anyone who is exceeding the ordinance limits would technically be, you know, subject to enforcement. But as Elise has explained really well in the past, too, enforcement in municipal situations like this is often complaint-based and really dependent on if there's a nuisance occurring and if neighbors bring that forward. Otherwise, enforcement isn't necessarily proactive in that way.
Go ahead, Amanda. Looks like you're...
Yeah, I, I kind of have an issue with this just because I feel like there needs to be something in place for people who, who already have chickens. There could be neighbors that complain because now they know they can. I mean, to a lot of people, chickens are like their pets. And I feel like passing this, you know, might make people feel like they have to get rid of the extra birds that they have. And I'd like to see it, just a clause in there, like saying, look, when these birds die off, you just can't replace them. Something to, to allow people to, to keep what they have, but over time, we will reduce it to the right number.
Tom?
It's in the packet also that this doesn't go in effect till January 1st, 2026. So it's not like they're, we're going out and hunting chickens tomorrow. So they have some time to, and they've been aware of this process for a while, so.
Tim? I would also add that the Planning Commission debated this issue extensively with significant input from the community and settled back on this decision not to grandfather because of the potential complications it could create, especially with regards to enforcement.
Can you, can you elaborate? Just, because I wasn't...
Well, we're not going to go around and count how many chickens everybody has right now to begin with, to decide on who's grandfathered in when we don't even have an ordinance allowing them now. And so it would create an undue burden on the village to track who has chickens and how many they have and who gets grandfathered in. And so after a significant debate, they decided to forward the ordinance as it stands to us to vote on.
Did you have something else on there?
Sure. Another part of that conversation was, there are a lot of details written into this, both regard, in regarding the number of birds, but also where a coop can be located, a run, setback, size, there's chickens, there's quail, there's, are there roosters or not? And so in an effort of kind of simplifying, the Planning Commission also decided, you know, it, it didn't make sense about which, which piece to grandfather and which not, or where to set limits and, and what that limit should be. So, you know, some people have a lot more chickens and they're, they might be meat birds. We went round and round with a lot of different scenarios that might be occurring. So in order to keep it simple, there was this delayed enforcement to January 1st. Maybe people want to, you know, accommodate relocating birds if that's their choice. But again, no one's sort of coming after specific properties with an enforcement or anything like that.
Anybody else? Sure. Well, you can just vote no, too.
Yeah, that's what I'll probably end up doing.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Higgins, second by Manke. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, six to one. Thank you. 783, Certified Survey Maps submitted by Joe Bull for 550 North Bur Oak Avenue, creating two lots. Commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. And a motion by Tim and second by Jason. Questions, comments? I have one. Sorry, I didn't think of this. It's the Planning Commission. I know there's a shared driveway agreement and there's a shared parking lot, but does that need, or should we have a cross parking agreement? Or is that in there already?
I don't believe that's in there already. There's just the 30-foot access easement.
Yeah. You think that's a concern?
Larry, did you have something?
Oh. Yeah, I can jump in there. I don't think it's a concern because they have parking available on each lot. It's just getting to that parking, which was the key as it, as it relates to this. And, and we did add a provision requiring that if, if they ever terminate that easement, that the village has to approve, just so that we don't end up in a situation where maybe they'd agree to get rid of it and then we're pressured to allow another access onto that road. So I think it's covered what we need there.
Great. Thank you, Larry. Okay, any other questions on that one? None. We have a motion by Tim, second by Jason. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 784, Certified Survey Maps submitted by Matt and Drew Prendly for 1031 and 1037, Breenhill Drive, combining two lots. Commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Motion by Tim, second by Amanda. Questions, comments on this one? Hearing none. We have a motion by Tim, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we will return to the normal agenda.
Thank you, Sonia. Thanks for moving those up.
Okay, item 4B, Alcohol Beverage License Application for Class B Fermented Alt Beverage Beer and Class C Intoxicating Liquor. Wine only for Twins LLC, doing business as Maria's Pizza. Located at 134 South Main Street, Agent Florime Vasari? Close enough? Thank you. Excuse me. Okay, I will open the public hearing. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board related to the topic at hand. A time limit of three minutes per speaker is set unless otherwise modified by the Village Board. Are there any staff comments?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Any comments from the petitioner? No. And then are there any public comments on this item? Public comments? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Item 4B2, Village Board Discussion, Possible Action on Application. Staff Recommendation, Motion to Approve Application as Presented. Motion by Tim, second by Paige. Questions, comments? I'll just comment, I'm glad Maria's is open again, but they may be off the subject. Anyway, motion, we have a motion by Tim, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
We'll be in touch tomorrow.
Item 4C, Presentation of the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Annual Report for 2024. We'll have Chief Linsmeyer and Chief Jessberger.
Good evening, Mr. Van Campen and Village Board. So we're happy to be here tonight to talk about the 2024 annual report. I talked to Phil a little bit earlier today. I said, it looks like the board meeting tonight here looks a little bit lengthy. Would you like the 15-minute version or would you like the 45-minute version? And he said, what do you think about 10, Fire Chief?
That's exactly what I said.
So we talked about it in great length. No, and all, and all due respect and all the above, I want to make sure we take care of our time and we want to make sure at, at that same point, we want to come out and talk to our Village Board here, along with our, rest of our district partners. Last week, we had the annual meetings in the township. We made all those again, talked to them about being the partners of the fire district and where we're going with our operations and all that kind of thing. I brought tonight with me our division chief of EMS along, so I'm going to have him do a little bit of talking tonight, also covering some of the EMS stuff. But we're going to give you kind of an abbreviated version and then we'll move it forward from there. One of the first things that I, I started out with, with in, in the townships last week and when I started talking to them is I, I remember when I first came here back in 2016, when Phil and the groups hired me when I came into here, and it's hard to believe it's going on, that 10-year mark, that kind of thing. But I look at where, where this district has went as far as call volume, where we have went with our capital plans and our budgets and all that kind of stuff. And there was only one way, as Amanda knows, we've only grown. And we've grown into a lot of different things. We can talk about budgets and all that other kind of stuff since subsequent to our meetings this year. But with our call demand and all that kind of stuff, the things that we kind of like, I, I bring everybody back to the same main page. And the same main page is basically, I go back to what a 1710 and a 1720 NFPA standards are. And for those that don't know about what those standards are, talking about a volunteer staff fire department and a career fire department, and then the standards they're meeting thereof. So what does that really mean in a, in a larger picture for a Village of Oregon and a, or a growing Oregon fire district? It means more demand and also looks at response times and where we need stations and all this other kind of stuff that goes with that. So basically, Fire Chief Linsmeyer, 10 years ago, laid a plan out for this commission, basically where and how we could do this, from basically transitioning from our volunteer part-time people and trying to make that into full-time and incorporating our part-time with that. I always remember people, with, with inside the fire district is where we started with our hourly wage, which was very minimal at the time, about $7.25, to now we're up to about $10 for the people coming in. And then our medics are now up to 23, which are huge strides, as Lisa knows, doing our books for the fire district and that kind of stuff. There are things that we have really went along. And first and foremost is the things that we agreed upon in these last 10 years or nine and a half years, or nine, eight and a half years going on, nine and a half years, almost 10. You look at those ti, that timeframe, it's about catching those second ambulance calls and making sure we provide service to the men, our people that we take care of, no matter where it is in that 44 or 46 square miles of the fire district. Those are the things that we can agree upon. There's a lot of other things that we'd like to probably disagree upon and different thoughts and all that other kind of stuff that goes with it. But at the end of the day, these are standards basically set in Dane County, and we want fire trucks, we want EMS people in somebody's yard in a timely fashion. And that's the thing that we all agree upon, and then we go from there. So before I move, move on, any questions so far or anything else? Otherwise, we'll kind of go into the report and kind of cover some of those things. And again, to speed this along tonight, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go basically page five, whoever's running the, the screen there, thank you. So page five is basically, starting out, for those that don't know, we hit 130 years of, of being in existence with the fire district this year. Back in August of 24, fire district 130 years old. There's a lot of men and women that have basically gave their life, their time to this community, protecting lives, taking care of folks on the EMS service. And back in 95, there was some, you know, when the EMS was standalone, that basically got merged into the fire district. So between the, both of those organizations are 100, 130 years. And the things that, that basically go on with that is, we are a, basically a Level B team in today's world. We have a lot of men and women that come to Oregon, Jessberger, Chief Jessberger and myself, we've been very fortunate to touch a lot of different people's lives that want a career in the fire and EMS world. And they're here with us for one and a half, maybe three years. They get their fire, fire one, fire two certifications, they get their EMT paramedics, and they move on different places. As Phil and others and our different commission members that sit on the board currently know, on an annual basis, we have usually between seven and nine, seven to 10 people that get career jobs different places throughout the country. Great for Oregon, but at that same time, and you look at some of the other statistics in our annual report, there's a lot of hours of training that go into that, like, I mean, thousands of hours trying to get people up and running to know the territory, and about that time, they move on and they, they start a career and they go some other direction. But that's good, it's a good recruiting tool for us. Basically, that next page, we turn to page six, basically some of the staff hours, you kind of see where we are with our staff hours, and you look at our internship, on the center of the page, the interns that we have, about six interns, do about 11,000 hours a year. And I look at that and I, again, they need to see both our rural operations and also our city operations, that kind of stuff. And that's a lot of experience for those six people to put on the books in a year. You think about 11, 11,000 hours and that kind of stuff. The other things probably of great magnitude is the regular scheduled hours of our part-time people. Again, the 13,000 hours that we always like to bring back is, you know, if those hours are not there, we'd have to hire other men and women in the full-time staff and that kind of stuff. And then we look at our regular, our, our overtime staffing and that kind of stuff. Years ago, as Lisa can contest, in the, in the budgeting world, we've had a lot of overtime. We hired a lot of people back. We have really managed our overtime well in the fire district the last few years and with some of our hires and that kind of stuff. And again, these are part-time folks that are doing this for us, so it's worked out very well and that kind of stuff. The other hours that you can basically see here are some of the incidents, our callback. We got about 1,000 hours in calling people back outside of our on-duty crews that are basically needed for fire suppression or EMS operations. And then if you look, we do a lot of different special events throughout the year, that kind of stuff throughout the district. We're a contract for hire at the racetrack and isters over here with their, with their Halloween events and that kind of stuff. Going on to the next page, probably what the nuts and bolts of everybody in the, any one of our district partners in the fire district are always concerned about is basically the budget information. And we took a snapshot here, basically looking back in 16 when I came here and where we are today. And if you take the difference basically in that nine years or that eight and a half years, there's about a million point four difference. We started out about a million one back in early 16, and now today, we're at about 2.4. If you look at the difference, it's about a million four over that stretch and that kind of stuff. If you look at that and you divide that out by the number of years, we're about 12.5% of an increase every year that was going on. And the reason I bring these numbers up, as I go back to our state legislators and everybody else, when our hands are basically cuffed with a lot of our budgets and, and raising dollars and cents and all that kind of stuff for our operations, I think we've been pretty financially responsible in the fire district. I think Phil and our, and our subsequent boards have, we've looked at different capital plans, we've looked at different things where we knew for some time, we could not necessarily buy, purchase new apparatus. We bought some used apparatus, different places. I mean, keep in mind, most of the fire apparatus this day and age, 800,000 to a million dollars is not only question for something that's probably going to have a shelf life of about maybe 20 years, that kind of thing. They really escalate very fast is what I'm trying to tell you. Here nor there, if you think about that, that's about $148,000 a year increase or about 12.5 over that stretch, if you, if you look at that there, and growing. I am reminded by a lot of different folks in our townships and also my village partners here.
I just like some more insight into these numbers a little bit, just from the standpoint, especially in the last three or four years, it seems to be jumping by substantial. Does this include capital purchases?
That includes capital, that's everything.
So this includes equipment, so it's not just strictly operational staff?
That's everything. Both of them, all together. Snapshot of both. Good question, Tom.
That makes a, that makes a big difference.
That makes a huge difference. Yes, I understand that totally. I totally get that fully. Then on page eight, that kind of breaks a lot of that stuff down, Tom, where you can take a look at that and all that other kind of stuff that goes with that in budget. take a look at that and all that other kind of stuff that goes with that, in budget and all those kind of things. And believe me, we know that, uh, fire district will be putting our budget together, Mark and I, Lisa will be working on that in May, we'll have the first read to our commission in June, and then we'll bring in the group together in, uh, July, basically back out here for our July 30th meeting, which I think is a, is a Wednesday, that kind of stuff. Mr. Jessberger, you want to cover our staffing plans that we put to the board a couple of years ago?
Yeah, um, you want to scroll onto the next page?
Basically, page nine.
Thank you, page nine. So, a- as we move along, we're having a-
Speak on the mic, please.
A little bit better? We'll get this closer, there we go. Um, as we move along, staffing and trying to find qualified individuals for fire EMS is getting harder and harder, um, whether it's, um, wages, um, competitiveness, um, lack of folks, whatever it takes. And, and, and we've realized that, that we need to have a plan in place, um, because we can't re- rely on volunteers, part-timers a- as we go along. So, we strategically, um, added, um, beginning of this year, one person, a seventh full-time individual to help on, cover the days off, to help on minimize our overtime and our, strain on our part-timers. So, that person's working the Kelly shift, uh, essentially, they work every Sunday, Wednesday to cover in built-in days off, um, as our full-time staff works, uh, 48-hour shifts. Um, and then in 2027, the way we have it built out, we're looking to add two more personnel, so we have three full-time people on each shift. Not a lot, but help ease the burden, and at least we know what we have for staffing, especially with us expanding to the paramedic level service. Um, in 2023, come, um, this past February, we're committed to the state of Wisconsin to have a paramedic on every day. Uh, we don't have a chance to flex back, we had to have a paramedic on every day. Um, the staffing plan helps build up, build towards that, uh, having firefighters, paramedics in the station. And then I think, uh, come 2020, 2030, we're looking to add an additional, three more full-time fire medics, we'll have four people on, um, every day, um, really just go along with the standards of NFPA staffing, uh, and really try to capture as many ambulance calls and as much revenue as we can back into the fire, fire EMS district.
Any questions so far? Moving on, some of the incident, incident statistics? Go ahead.
Yeah, we can cover, uh, incident statistics, uh, back, uh, one of my initiatives, when, when we came back here, is to capture as many, uh, second ambulance calls as we could. We're, uh, losing a lot of those to, uh, mutual aid, um, ambulances, and we're sending a fire, uh, apparatus out on a lot of EMS calls that was taken away from fire inspections and other daily tasks. So, where you see the red going down and the blue going up, was kind of where we were able to capture more ambulance calls, less demand on fire. Uh, we got out of COVID where we're at now, um, so we're actually really starting to see true, uh, true numbers on EMS. We're doing a real good job of capturing almost every single ambulance call within our fire EMS district. And you can also see now, the fire incidents are actually kicking back up, and those are true actual fire incidents, we're not just chasing ambulances. So, a- as you can see, as the times go along, the populations, um, growing, the population's getting older, just more demand for both fire and EMS services in our area.
I would like to just again, reiterate one of the things that Phil and our subsequent boards, basically Oregon did, is, uh, priority, priority medical dispatch, both on the fire side and the EMS side. When call takers call 911, the importance of giving the exact information, that stuff is then put into the CAD, that information is relayed and then sends the appropriate apparatus. So, if we can buy with one single ambulance, we don't need a medic ambulance, we don't send a medic ambulance, we can send a basic ambulance. Then of course, if we, if it's a car crash and we need a couple ambulances, we can bring more ambulances and we can build upon those. So, by the technology that the county put in place for, uh, both fire and EMS and the response plans that we have put in place, it's working out very well. And some of these numbers o- over the years, as maybe Phil and others probably can contest, our fire numbers came down probably about 150, because we were sending a lot more fire apparatus to other incidents that we kind of like, uh, redefined. Any questions? Okay. Go ahead.
Um, next paragraph, or next page, uh, just, uh, breakdown of our fire responses, um, within 2024, uh, 28 fires of various type of, uh, structured fires, brush fires, whatever it might be, within our fire EMS district. We went, uh, the fire department, again, as, as we talk about increasing, uh, true numbers, um, the fire department, fire personnel responded to an increase of EMS assist over, um, that timeframe. We're actually a little bit safer in the area, responding only 33 motor vehicle crashes versus, um, 51, so those numbers are good. Um, we talked about hazardous conditions, those like wires down, arcing wires, something like that, uh, not, not a hazmat incident, but just various, it's, it's almost a, pretty much a catch-all. Um, and then we talked about alarm activations. That could be faulty smoke detectors, faulty carbon monoxide detectors, legitimate responses, um, a lot of public education involved with that and age of detectors, battery replacement, all that. Um, and then, uh, 42 times we responded to mutual aid, uh, units to other surrounding communities.
Any questions on that? Something on, on the responses, I, I will just say, I, I know I've told the commission this multiple times, that kind of stuff. We are, we have seen a few sprinkler saves in our district here, probably within the last six months now, we've had two of them. We've had one where we actually had a dryer in one of our, uh, three-story apartment buildings, basically went up, the sprinkler went off, basically contained it to the dryer. Yes, there's water on the floor and everything else that's got to be dealt with, but people can come back in the unit that night, that, that afternoon. And then, uh, we had one just, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, and again, in something that's basically just started renting probably in late December, maybe early January, that we did the occupancy on that, and people are, start renting there, basically a kitchen fire where a sprinkler, uh, activated there, basically saved, saved the lady from being on fire, uh, put her out and put the, uh, the appliance out. So, great things with sprinklers. I know they come with a cost and all the above, but wherever sprinklers can be, sprinklers do save lives, wherever, wherever that happens. And Casey did, uh, Chief Jessberger did bring up here, you know, talking about hazmat calls and everything of that nature. A few weeks ago, Lauren got a phone call from me, probably about six o'clock in the morning. For those that don't know, we had a very serious, another gas situation in the village of Oregon that we, uh, we mitigated and we worked it out. Basically, we had a lightning strike that struck probably about 4:30 in the morning, ruptured a gas line underneath a tree, filled the storm sewers, went through a, went through a, uh, the, the, what's the streets now there? Perry Parkway and Clydesdale, uh, that area. We had to do some major evacuation, then we had to shut down the gas with the lyant, and then we had to bring, bring it back down. We were actually above explosive limits. It's not often you have a gas meter in your hand and it tells you to like, run. Literally, when it starts screaming at you, and some of our young men, men and women have never seen it, they said, what does this mean? I said, we're over the explosive limits. Now we need to get it down and not, uh, get anyone hurt besides ourselves. So, that kind of stuff. Fortunately, it all worked out. Go ahead, EMS response.
Um, again, our EMS responses are at the all-time high back in 2024. Um, 116 of those times, we had two AM, two ambulances out at the same time, we're able to capture those calls with our, on, on-duty staffing, not having to, um, rely on mutual aid ambulances coming in. The nice thing that, that I think one of the things that the chief and I really want to hone in on, the way that we're staffing our folks, the way that we're trying to capture ambulance calls, only 19 times last year did a mutual aid ambulance had to come into our community. By responding with our staff, we're getting to everyone's house fast and quick, there's no delay in waiting for somebody from Stoughton or Brooklyn or, or Fitchrona to come down. We're doing a good job capturing those calls. Uh, and then, I mean, I'll let you guys look at the numbers again. Our number one, uh, response, falls, uh, and really, what can we do to get out there and our, and our senior center and our partners there do a great job with communicating and educating, uh, folks with fall, fall prevention, injury prevention and all that. They work on that end, we, uh, work on the end when they fall and get hurt and you go to the hospital, so. Um, then, uh, next page, uh, public contacts. Um, again, you got our fire and EMS breakdown, uh, completed 752 fire inspections, uh, issued over 300 burn permits to all of our township partners and, uh, the residents there, did a whole bunch of work with public education on smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector installs, um, a whole bunch of public education contacts, whether it be from national night out, people walking by for tours, uh, fire prevention, uh, month, uh, meeting with schools, daycares and everything. So, just meeting with a lot of folks and people.
Community risk reduction, the next page is basically, that's our fire prevention and, uh, inspection division. Basically, uh, the biggest thing that I want to tell you about community risk reduction is that we put a new program in and we are going to be building out, come first of the year, we're going to be building out every address, uh, that you can actually log in yourself, put on a secure site, and it'll be their real-time CAD, meaning like, uh, say it's my address, I live in the village of Oregon, it's such and such an address, I fill it all out, I have this many pets, I have these things that I'm concerned of, I might have these hazards in the basement, I might have this, this and this, and, uh, you know, maybe I can't get out of the house, uh, that fast to, that I, uh, you know, uh, have some other special leads that I have to address, that kind of stuff. You put that in the, in the site, uh, our men and women, our ambulances and our fire trucks will be able to get that real-time. Now that has to go through the 911 center and all that kind of stuff, and it just shares these different screens, uh, with a lot of different people, that kind of stuff. So, we're getting really tight as far as that information. So, it's just between yourself and our, our reporting software and the 911 center, only if your address would get basically called, you would dial it in, that kind of stuff. So, come first of the year, we'll be doing that. And also in our rural townships, uh, you know, uh, it'll also be working for us there with our, our setbacks of our driveways, some of our driveways are 12, 1600 feet long, where we gotta actually lay, uh, you know, hu- uh, large diameter holes all the way into it to be able to draft water from the roadside. So, those are all some good things that are happening there. And of course, again, working with the, uh, building inspector here in the village of Oregon, uh, checking all the commercial buildings and all the other occupancy buildings where any, any life is, that kind of stuff, where we're doing all of those kind of things on a monthly basis, uh, and twice a year for our 2% dues. Uh, in the village of Oregon, we probably get 2% dues, probably about 80-some thousand dollars, as I recall. Correct? Pretty close? So, EMS division, Casey?
Yeah, on the EMS side, again, just under 1300, 1300 calls for the year. Uh, one of the things that, early in the year, that we really started, uh, working out with our neighboring partners, is providing paramedic intercept services to, uh, the communities that don't have paramedic ambulances. Um, so where those communities that had to wait for Madison or Fitchrona to come down, now we're, we're the ones going down to Brooklyn, down into Rock County, going over to Stone and everything. Uh, we're doing about four or five of those a month, uh, for the critical calls, cardiac arrests, um, bad traumas, whatever it might be. Really working with our training program to, uh, really integrate our non-paramedics and our paramedics working together, get our fire folks working together. Uh, we have been using our, uh, Mid-Fidelity Madigan, um, that's really interactive with our folks, we're making good strides in the training program. Again, with all the turnover that we have and the youngsters that are coming through, just a lot of training needs to happen on, on a daily basis. And then, uh, moving on to the fire division side, um, again, a lot of youngsters, a lot of things to do, whether it's becoming a fire inspector, becoming a level fire one or fire two firefighter, become a motor pump operator to actually drive the fire trucks and operate the pumps, there's a lot of, that goes into it on a daily basis and a monthly basis. Um, so, a- as you guys can see there, um, well over 10,000 hours between training and other activities that we're, um, giving through, over the year, just to get our men and women up and ready to go on the road.
Yep, that's the training page right there, yep. Basically, again, on our capital purchases, I, I, again, you've heard me talk of this a lot of you, or mu- many times over, we try to buy used, we try to refurbish, and we try to do whatever we can to do to try to keep the cost down, because we know our main objective was to have men and women in the fire station be able to, to handle the calls. And that's pretty, pretty much what we've done. Without doing that, we would not be, not even close to, uh, being able to keep this thing inside the, inside the operating and budgets and all that other kind of stuff. So, that's just what we had to do and that's what we've done, and that's kind of the plan moving forward. Next page is just basically a picture of some of that stuff there. That, uh, was the latest thing that they did there this last year. We, uh, just put it in effect, uh, put it on the street probably early January. You see that, that should last, it's about 20 years, it's got 5,000 miles on it, it's mental shape, uh, it's never seen winter, uh, or no salt or any of that kind of stuff. That vehicle there, I think we had about 300,000 stick it in my mind, is buying it used, where that vehicle would have been about 900 to probably a million two, uh, otherwise. So, just kind of give you an idea of the savings that are taken care of, that kind of stuff. And then we move on to our last page, and I'll just briefly hit our last page just a little there, about anything that happens to do with the station project and all that, and of course, our townships and the village, all, all you, all you folks are like, what are the fires district doing and where is this all going to go and that kind of stuff? And I just, I just touch it just very briefly, you know? Uh, that fire station project we've had on paper before, that was a few years ago, we moved that out, uh, during COVID, we moved that back a couple more years. You know, um, those kind of capital plans and, and all that stuff is put in place, but they're all, again, plans, things can move around, are, are flexible and all that kind of stuff. I think the biggest thing, one of, one of the huge accomplishments that I've set at the townships, and I'll say it here tonight, is just how our commission, I'm very proud of our commission for coming together a couple of different ways, and I'll just start with this. Uh, last year, when we were here, uh, back in July, we talked about, or maybe it was September, when we had all of the municipalities here that were going to hire, uh, a firm to come in and basically do a needs, a needs analysis for the, for the district. Very proud to see that our commission came together, decided to figure out the criteria on hiring and what they wanted to use for grading mechanisms, and then put all of that stuff into play, uh, before they put the RFP out. Then they put the RFP out, they went, they had, I think it was seven different folks that basically came in, they had some meetings that they had, uh, some talks, some discussions and that kind of stuff. They decided to basically hire a firm and that firm is now working on that project. But there was a lot of subsequent work between the townships and also the village, uh, getting where we are today. And, uh, that, them are, them are huge things for, for our operation and that kind of stuff, and I'm very proud of them. Now the next steps between here and July, probably August of this year, uh, we will see what they put all together, there's a lot of subsequent meetings and a lot of stuff that's basically being looked at. Of course, the, the condition of our current 25-year-old operation, plus our, uh, existing apparatus base of the 90-year vintage and that kind of stuff, there'll be some assessment of that, uh, you know, then the needs where we are, looking at our staffing plans, looking at our operation plans and all that kind of stuff. So, there'll be a lot of, some good, uh, educational, uh, uh, information for myself and probably for all of our district partners in the future, moving forward with this project. And then, at some, at some point, it'll be decided on, what is this going to really look like, where this is going to go, is it going to be at the current location and all that kind of thing? All those things will be decided at some point, uh, and the price tags will be all put together at that point also. So, we're looking forward to that, all the above, uh, over the next days, weeks and years. So, I really appreciate everybody's support, not only the village of Oregon here, but also our, our township players and everybody else to keep this fire district solvent and keeping it operational, uh, taking care of the, uh, you know, our, our patriots and basically all those folks in the fire district. So, I'll leave it as that, I'm a little bit over the 15 minutes, I'm sorry, Phil. So, I usually try to do my darndest, but that's where it is, sir.
Questions for, uh, Tim, please?
Yeah, could I, uh, learn a little bit more about the community risk reduction program? Would that allow people, um, so they would input information about their home that would allow you to come in more prepared? Would that also allow them to provide you ways of accessing their home, like a garage code or where the key is hidden?
Absolutely, so it's called Community Connect, it's through our first new program that, that we, uh, recently, uh, implemented for fire, uh, fire inspections, reporting software, all, all that stuff. Basically, what it does is reach out to the community and where we had to keep a lot of notes in the Dane County Comm Center, of maybe somebody has special needs, maybe somebody that is overweight and needs extra lifting assistance, or like the fire chief says, somebody that has a long driveway, what are special instructions for us? At any point in time, somebody can go in, go to that website when they have access and really put down whatever they want to, upload photos to it, uh, for ways to get in, ways to get out, um, put that special needs information in, really keep it up to date real-time. Our limitation with, uh, notes that we call CAD notes up at the Dane County Comm Center is that they date out, right? Did, did we put the note in 2017, those folks don't even live there anymore? Just, just all those limitations, how old is it, how inaccurate is it? So, uh, the individuals who so choose to participate, completely voluntary program, who so choose to participate, completely voluntary program, will be able to go in there at any time and update whatever, whatever type of living conditions they have. Maybe somebody has cancer now, or they're in a medical bed, right? And there's all different set of circumstances that lets us know real time what's going on. That, that's really what the purpose of the Community Connect is.
Cool. Thank you. That sounds like a great program. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Let's see. Item 41, memorandum of understanding between Oregon Cares LLC and Village of Oregon regarding drug-free community support program client. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm trying to make sure I'm close enough to this microphone.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Name for the record, sure. I was getting there, Phil.
Sorry.
I'm Cynthia DeCavalli. I am the project director for Oregon Area Cares.
And I am Amy Miller. I am the project coordinator for Oregon Area Cares, and I also work for the Oregon School District. Do you need our addresses?
Okay.
All right.
I don't remember who's starting.
I am.
Awesome.
We're going to have to cue the, the slide. So can you advance our slide? Thank you very much for allowing us to come before the village board tonight, and I'll use Martin Jink's language, request to continue the Oregon Cares grant relationship. To start out with, I just want to share very briefly, and Phil, it'll be short, about our coalition so that you understand more about who we are, to make sure you have enough information for the ask. So we just updated our mission statement, so that's what we're going to start with because I think it summarizes what we do. Oregon Area Cares Community Coalition celebrates and promotes the vital role of family and community in strengthening protective factors for our youth. Our members work to enhance resilience and to help to ensure a safer, more nurturing community for young people to thrive.
Next slide. So we've been doing this work for quite a while, maybe not quite as long as that picture's been around, but we've been doing this kind of work since 2009. And in 2019, we applied for and received a five-year grant from, actually, it's from the CDC, and it is called a Drug-Free Communities Grant. And the village is our fiscal agent for that grant. We're back here tonight because this grant allows us an additional five years of funding, and our five years is up. So we are in the process of, of preparing to submit for another five years of funding, and we would like the village to continue our relationship as our fiscal agent. Right now, that would be the end of that funding. There was a brief shining moment when there was a glimmer that they would continue the, the funding to year 15. That has evaporated in the current climate, but hope springs eternal. So what we're going to talk about tonight is a little bit about what our impact has been over the last five years, in part because of the grant that you are our fiscal agent for, but also because of some of the other work that we do that's supported in other ways. So just, we have to pick an area of service. Our area of service is the Oregon School District. The Village of Oregon is right in the middle of that, but in case you've never looked at this map, we are 88 square miles, and it's really an interesting district because we take in a little bit of Green County, we take in just the little corner of Rock County, we have some fairly urban areas, we have some fairly suburban areas, and, and we have some rural areas, which gives us kind of a diversity of, of, of service that we need to provide. The other thing I think I want to say with that, with that in front of us is that each one of those communities is different. So the Drug-Free Communities Grants encourage us to develop local solutions to local problems. And one of the things we learned very early on is that those local problems might not be the same in Oregon as they are in Brooklyn, they might not be the same in a rural area as they are in a more urbanized area. In order to make the best, to make the best solutions to those local problems, we try to have as many stakeholders at the table as we can. So you can see there are 12 different stakeholder groups that we are required to have at the table. We actually have other people beyond that who are at the table as well. So, thank you, thank you for being our fiscal agent for these past five years. It is, what, what you are submitting, what we, what you are agreeing to is about two hours a month of administrative time. We have, in this round of the grant, written in a, a budget item that would cover staff salary for that roughly two hours a month. You also provide us with computer magic, computer support, we pay for that as well. I don't, and you, you give us office space, which we love. So in the last five years, our, we have brought about $780,000 into the community. That includes the 625,000, so it's 125,000 a year for five years for the grant. So that's 625,000. We are also required to have an in-kind match. Typically, that's in goods and services, so volunteer time, people, those kind, that kind of thing. The office space is part of that in-kind that supports the grant. So an additional 625,000 in, in-kind donations. We were fortunate enough to also receive a two-year grant through the Department of Health Services in the state of Wisconsin that is funded through Juul dollars, the Juul vape devices they've settled. And so that brings about another $80,000 in for the two-year. That's a renewable grant. We'll be writing for a renewal for that. You're not our fiscal agent for that, and we have not asked you to be. And we are also getting, we get some money that comes through one of the associations that we belong to that is state opioid response dollars. So that's about $15,000 a year, or about another $75,000. So all of those go to do a lot of the work that, or help us to finance a lot of the work that we do.
So now we're going to talk about the benefits. And the way we look at benefits are how we've been really trained to look at benefits. There is something called the Seven Strategies for Community Change. So if we have a grant for five years, what is the impact over time? Hopefully, a big impact. And the first one is providing information. So we have facilitated and supported in the last five years over 75 community outreach presentations. We currently measure about 4 million views on the billboards that are coming into town, which are designed and created locally. We have over 175 unique website views in the 30 months since our new website launch, and we support OHS Student Club members in providing information at school, in our community, at village board meetings, at least public safety, and in Dane County.
The second level that we work on is building skills because that's sort of the next level in community preparedness. And we, we, at every one of our coalition meetings, we cover a new topic to, and that helps build capacity of our members. And if any of you are ever interested in attending our meetings, please reach out, and we would be happy to include you. I know you have a quorum problem, but we can work that out. We also support community skill-building events. We have screened different editions, actually, of a documentary called Screenagers. We have had presentations on teen brain development and how that affects, how that is affected by AODA use. We've sponsored Narcan trainings. We have talked about nicotine and risks to the teenage brain and body in presentations. And we have also offered QPR training for suicide prevention. We teach parenting classes. We've been doing that since 2009, and we have had about 500 families who've come through our Strengthening Families 10 to 14 program. And we love teaching it. And finally, we have developed and funded youth leadership training for the past two years for students at the high school.
And now we're moving on to providing support. And just a few examples, we met with Lauren and her wastewater treatment staff to learn about what they are seeing with vapes and nicotine pouches and wastewater. And with her feedback, and she's going to share it back, our new posters also say, do not flush vapes. So things, and again, when we talk about local problems and community stakeholders, and as we know, that's an environmental hazard in a big way. It's acute hazardous waste, and there's a lithium battery in there. So working with people and having access to resources to create our own information that is locally important to our community. We also worked with, and we continue to work with, high school clubs that are focusing on not using alcohol or other drugs, they're focusing on positive mental health, and helping people with QPR training. We have students that are trained in QPR training because, as you know, with suicide, or students usually talk to another student before they talk to an adult. So these students are trained in how to listen, what questions to ask, and to help get them the support they need, whether they're interested or not. We also support health teachers and AODA counselors with current information and resources. We have paid for staff at Oregon Middle School and higher, and Oregon High School to be trained as cessation facilitators, so to help youth who are already using vapes and are already struggling with addiction to nicotine or other drugs. So they have in-person cessation in both buildings versus, you know, text help and other options that are available. We also support drug takeback events. We have one this Saturday coming up, nine to noon at the Oregon Police Station, and we partner with the Oregon Police Station. We also partner with UW School of Pharmacy, whose students come and they get to see drugs coming in and have conversations with people. And then finally, we also are able to, with our state funds, fund two summer interns who come and are able to do projects. We will have two masters in public health students coming to work in Oregon this summer.
Okay. Next step along the way is reducing access or enhancing barriers, so trying to put some guardrails up. To that end, we have distributed over 450 medication lock boxes and over 750 drug disposal deactivation pouches. We support drug takeback days of April and October of every year. Amy has already talked about that. And we offered, we have been able to offer virtual Narcan trainings and distribute Narcan nasal spray to people who have completed those trainings.
And then finally, educate and inform about modifying or changing policies. We have access to a lot of resources that can help school district, that can help you, that can help others in the community. And when we talk about policy, it can be big policy laws, school policy, or it can be, as Cynthia calls it, little policy, just changes in the community that can positively impact and create a safer environment. So some of the things we've done is we've collaborated with our Positive Social Dorming Student Club at the high school, and they actually met with all of the OSD administrative staff, and they trained them on the dangers of nicotine use, number one, vaping. But the most important part was they taught them about safe handling of vapes. And they gave each of the schools a metal lock box so that when they find vapes, they also gave them nitro gloves so that nobody touches. So they increased the safety because we do find vape devices on playgrounds and other places. So the students were the ones that educated the staff. Let's see. We also shared information about current nicotine products, including new drinks containing alcohol with THC, with the village public safety, and we had a student representative here as well. And we were, we are working with the school district on updating student and parent handbooks.
Okay. Next slide, finally. A couple of quick highlights to, to share. We're almost done. 15 coalitions every two years are recognized by a national training organization called CADCA. We were in 2022, one of those 15 national coalitions recognized nationally as a blue-ribbon coalition. I think the next one, we have created, you've probably seen our billboards if you come in, plastic Mickey bees. And we're particularly proud of this one because this one was created with the, the help and input of our students. They were like, this will not only speak to adults, but it will speak to kids. And so that was a really important part of that for us. And I also want to say, this, we just found this out, Dane County, yeah, Public Health Madison Dane County comes in and does tobacco sale compliance checks in our community. They just did ours in the month of March, and we were one of only three municipalities in Dane County that had a 100% pass rate for tobacco sales. I know, well done, well done, everyone. So I think that's everything. One more slide. Thank you again for your, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We hope that you'll choose to support us and that you've got an MOU, I think, as part of your packet. Remember that, again, we have set up our budget at this point so that there is no cost to you, assuming that Lisa and I can, can, can get the numbers straight, but I think we will. And that, that our goal at the end of all of this is to have, to make sustainable change that makes sure that Oregon is and stays a safe and wonderful place for kids to grow up in. Thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
Lynn, please.
Jump in, Lynn.
I have a couple.
Sure.
Of all different types. So the first one, hope does spring eternal. However, I guess what I'm wondering is what happens if we don't get the five-year grant?
If we don't get this renewal?
Yes.
We actually have a couple of other grants in the works.
Okay.
We have, because we were, because we were the COVID consortium, the, the COVID cohort, cohort, is what they actually called us. Our grant started just as COVID was starting.
Okay.
And so we had about an 18-month stretch when we couldn't travel, we couldn't do a lot of things. So we have carryover money.
Okay.
So we'll have probably enough between that and the other stuff that we're doing that we will have time to reapply.
Okay.
There's no reason that, that we can't reapply, and we can certainly do that. As long as we're not asking for more than 10 years of funding, we can do that.
Okay, great. And then my other question, completely unrelated to the funding piece, which is more of your outreach. We have heard quite often from Chief Peggancuff about some of the struggles that her department is currently facing in mental health and the calls that they're receiving. In the outreach work that you've done or plan to do in the future, have you explored resources to have officers give out during mental health crises in a family call or dealing with, you know, an adolescent who is struggling in a specific way? We've often talked, or I've often talked with Chief Peggancuff about the, I'm going to forget the name, of the mental health support that Madison?
Cares.
Cares.
And it's also in Sunbury.
Look at that.
It's also in Sunbury.
Same name. That, that has been a super supportive piece to their outreach, but that that's very difficult out here, and that that comes with also its own challenges. So I guess I'm just wondering, has our Oregon Cares thought about partnering in some specific ways with the police department in providing some of those resources to the families that they see?
I think one of the things we can say very clearly is, the first five years of this grant, we were supposed to, based on the funding, focus on alcohol and nicotine.
Okay.
And in the last three months, the world has opened up that mental health is now on the table. So in the, in the old world, your funding had to be, if it wasn't about that subject topic, you couldn't do it.
Interesting.
So I think it's, it's really a new world. Also, the community health needs assessment that all the hospitals do, for the first time ever, it's a third line item. They have substance use and mental health on the same line.
Wow.
So that really the state of Wisconsin now is really integrating
Okay.
the two as well. So I think things are going to happen quickly because people are seeing that it's not separate.
Right.
We're also partnering with Stoughton Health, and that gives us some entree into some of the, the clinics. Because sometimes what those kids need is some interventions before they see the police. And if we can make primary care providers more aware of those needs, we may be able, you know, we're about prevention, not treatment. So we're, we're trying to come up with strategies that help us prevent those things. I think the other thing I just want to add is that both Amy and I provide support to families and kids who are in both, either juvenile court or municipal court, I mean, truancy court. And a lot of times, those are kids who need some help figuring out how to get to mental health care, how to find a therapist that works for them, how to afford the cost of medications. So we, I, that's a carryover from the work that I did when I worked for the school district. And I'm delighted to be able to continue to do that in, in the court.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Somebody else? Amanda, please.
I just want to say I've known both of you for a long time.
You have, indeed.
And we, we could not have two more capable and wonderful compassionate people doing this work. And just, this is amazing. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
A quick question I had, and that is, clearly you're closely affiliated with the school district, your work takes place. Is there any thought to maybe having the school district be your fiscal agent?
The transition right now in the timeline, so the grant announcement was delayed due to lots of things going on, and the application is due on May 5th. So I, I mean, realistically?
Yeah.
They do have one of our grants that they do oversee. So they have the Juul grant.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So this is a potentially an action item. Amanda?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second. And Tim. Motion by Amanda, second by Tim. Further discussion? Hearing, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $685,168.49. Staff recommendation, motion to approve by Jason and Tim. Questions? Lynn?
I have a question on page eighty-two, and it's, I think I know. It's interesting that Oregon CARES is here. In, it's 10483 Adams Outdoor Advertising. I'm guessing this is for the Oregon CARES billboards?
That's correct.
Great. Thanks. And I just wanted to make a note here, just for anyone watching, because we are fiscal agents, we see these costs come through our vouchers and our budgets, but as these ladies have explained, that money is, is funded in a different way. So it's not necessarily the, the village spending nineteen thousand dollars on a billboard. It's just funneling that cost through. And I know sometimes when the public, or even when I first looked at these vouchers, it's very difficult to kind of understand some of that nuance. So just calling that out for anyone in the public who's wondering about how that works.
Tom? No? Somebody, anybody else? No? Okay. We have a motion by Jason, and second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying, I'm sorry?
It's a roll call.
Oh, yeah. Here we go again.
This one, I think I remember.
Peterson?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Knipfer?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah. Item six, consent agenda, staff recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented, items A through B. Jason, motion, second. Amanda? Questions, comments? Amanda?
Oh, sorry. No, I was waving by the Amy.
Okay.
She waved at me, and I waved back instinctively.
That's cool. Any questions, comments? Hearing, we have a motion by Jason, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item seven, we have covered. Total item, no, sorry, seven B. Thank you. Ad hoc Public Art Committee, one, proposal for mural by artist Mariella Groves, I hope I have that correct, to be located at Kaiser Fireman's Park Restroom Building, 245 Brook Street. Committee, Park Board, and Staff Recommendation, Motion to Approve as Presented. Tim and Paige.
I can say a couple of things if that'd be helpful.
Please. Thank you.
So this is something that the Public Art Committee's been working on for a while in conversation with Public Works. And this has gone in front of the Parks Board as well and gotten their thumbs up. It'll be, this was created by someone, Mariella, on the Public Art Committee and reviewed by the, the team. It's going to be the same wrap material that, by the same company that does utility box wraps that you've seen around town. And the only thing the Parks Board requested was a little sign or a placard that said paid for by the art committee, which comes from grants and donations and funds raised in other ways by the Public Art Committee itself. So any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. We have a motion by Tim, a second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Seven C, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, one, in review, rethinking diversity, equity, and inclusion article. This for submission to the Observer. Committee Recommendation, Motion to Approve as Presented. Paige, are you making motion? Yep. Any second. Amanda? And is this, Paige, do you want to speak on this, or someone else?
Sure, I can speak on this. So the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and I should actually just speak, it's Dan from, he's the pastor for People's United and Church, and he is on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, wrote this article. He has been doing, I'm going to call them coffee connections, I think he calls them something else, where he goes up to a villager and starts chatting with them at a coffee shop. And so this article was written kind of just on his experience, and he would like to, and the committee would like to post this in Oregon Observer, just as an education piece. And we would like to continue to do that, I think, quarterly with Oregon Observer.
Okay. Questions? Anyone? Comments? Tim?
I would just make a comment. I thought that this article did a really nice job of describing DEI in an environment where sometimes it's labeled as something that it isn't. So I thought it was well done, and I definitely support this.
The only question I had was, and the, the one that was distributed to us did not have Dan's signature on it, but would that be the intent, that he would sign it?
I think so, but we do want the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee on it.
Yes, right.
We all, you know.
Right.
Support and read it.
That's absolutely fine, yeah. Okay. I just didn't want it to go anonymous because.
Yes, I agree. Yes, he deserves the authorship.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Edits? Hearing, we have a motion by Paige, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, unfinished business, center for discussion and/or possible action. A, proposal from Oregon Community Access Incorporated for funding of $2,175 related to production of referendum education campaign videos. Staff Recommendation, Motion to Approve as Presented. Jason and Tim. Martin, did you want to?
I think it was laid out pretty clear in the memo. Mueller, I guess our suggestion was that we could have it done in-house, well, not in-house, but through OCA and save a little money rather than having OCA. Mueller hired a production company, and it turns out that, you know, that it turned out great. In fact, Mueller complimented OCA Media on their production, and Martin and I had indicated that with board approval that we felt that they should be reimbursed for their time. So that's where we are. Did you have anything to add?
That's perfect.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion by Manke, second by Higgins. Further discussion? Hearing, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you for coming in, Paul. Item eight B, Resolution Number 25-14, Acceptance of Stormwater Improvements in Advance of the Village of Foxborough Outlet. One, Staff Recommendation, Motion to Approve as Presented. Tim and Jason. Questions? Comments for Lauren?
I think Martin may be able to speak to this a little better.
All right.
Yeah, if there's any questions.
Okay.
Seeing none. I have a motion by Tim, second by Jason. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. It's the contract for engineering services between Village of Oregon and J.T. Engineering for Wolf Street, which County Highway MM, Jamesville Street to Pleasant Oak Drive for a cost not to exceed $275,000, and amendment number one to the contract in the amount of $1,800. Staff Recommendation, Motion to Approve. And there are two things we are approving, the contract and the amendment.
Do you want those as two separate motions?
No, not necessarily. Tom and Tim. Now, questions for Lauren, if any? Go ahead, Tom.
Is some of this, I guess the total cost, is that split? Or how does that, so it's not the full amount, it's the, a part, portion of this?
That's correct. So in this particular case, Dane County has asked us to run this project as a, something that we hold the contracts for, and that'll be true of design as well as construction, and they will reimburse us per their cost share agreement. And one thing I did want to note on this is, between the time we put this memo in, and today we did actually receive a signed copy of that agreement, so it had passed by the time we put this in, but we now have that on file as well.
What's the shared percentage of?
So it's a little bit complicated. So what we have, what Dane County has elected to do is, this contract is for $275,000, but because of just the, the way that the work will fall within the calendar years, that 275 includes both design as well as construction administration, but the, the cost share agreement that we have right now is just for design. So they will cover up to $90,000 of design, and I don't have our total off the top of my head, unfortunately. But there is then going to be about $45,000 in construction inspection as well that they'll cover, and they'll roll that into the eventual actual construction cost, cost share agreement.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion by Kirstover, second by Higgins. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Lauren. Eight D, Review Adjustments to the Public Works Department organizational plan. Staff Recommendation, Motion to Approve creation of department leadership team by directing changes to position descriptions, development of position description for proposed streets lead worker, and evaluate position for placement within the employee compensation plan. Motion by Jason, second by Tim. Okay. Who wants to run with this one?
I can do that. So most of what I would kind of go over is covered at great length, it turns out, in this memo. I meant it to be shorter, so I apologize. It ended up going on a ways. I would, I would guess that probably the, the most interesting topic to, to go through from a budgetary standpoint certainly is the street's lead worker position. It's certainly something that we think could benefit the department, but we also recognize the position that we're in right now and the position that the village is in. And so we certainly wanted to get the board's input here. One thing that I absolutely meant right in here that I'd just like to put out, because by the time I got to the end, I had completely forgotten it, is just a shout out to Nick, Don, and Cal, who were instrumental in the development of this, as well as in certainly my sanity, and I think just running this department for the last six months, as well as long before that. But the village is incredibly lucky to have them. I'm incredibly lucky to call them coworkers, and I just want to mention how wonderful they are as we talk through this.
Questions? Lynn, please.
Yes. Thank you for the detailed memo. I, I think it was actually necessary in understanding the intricacies of this department. I think we all sitting here can agree that the Public Works Department is a beast unto itself, and I don't envy your role in trying to wrangle that beast on a daily basis. So I think that the leadership team, in my eyes, is something that's welcomed. More voices, more heads together, compromising on specific things, I think, is really helpful. In terms of the street, potential street cha, position change, I, I struggle in the sense that I would like to see more of a concrete cost, and I know that that's hard because there are a lot of factors in that, and you can only go down that road so far before you've already gone down it long enough, and that's tough. So I know that coming up on this meeting agenda, we're going to talk about a potential budget discussion happening, meeting. And I'm wondering if this might be something that we want to get some more advice on for that meeting, so that we would have more of a number on what that might look like in terms of a budget ask or change?
I was just going to say that, just for clarity, I don't think there's an intent to fill this position right now, but just to create it, find the, where the salary should be, and then come back to us and see if it's okay with us. But there's no intention to go out and fill it right at this point.
Okay. I guess my question is, upon the development and presentation of that to the board, then is the intent to fill it? Like after the board?
The board would have to approve it, yes.
Right. And that will not be an ask of us for the 2026 budget?
Well, I, I guess it could be.
Yeah. What you're being asked to tonight is to give staff the authorization to actually develop a job description, and then go have that evaluated by our compensation consultant for placement on our employee compensation plan. So then, at that point, we would have the information that, what you're talking about, which is cost.
Got it.
So are we talking about, what is it in addition to, is this, I can't remember, is this a new position, or are we replacing an existing crew person position with this position?
It would be a new position, but the idea would not be to, it would be an internal hire and not to immediately backfill then that crew position.
So, once we have the information in terms of salary, then we can evaluate, is this something we want to consider for the 26 budget? And is it, maybe there's different levels of it in terms of, maybe we're filling it and not filling, backfilling? Or maybe we do have the capacity, and we do want to prioritize it and fill it, and also fill the crew person. So at this point, we just need to know, we don't even know what we're dealing with in terms of numbers. We have to get that evaluated and figure that out.
That sounds fine. I guess my concern is that if, if we're looking at budget in the, in the upcoming month, I don't want to ignore it. I don't want to forget about it, and then we sort of settle on where we want to move our money around in that, this upcoming budget, and then this salary is an ask for us, and we feel like we can't necessarily, we, we didn't factor that into the discussion that we're about to have. So I'll just leave it at that.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think the, the question right now before you is, we are, are you opposed to the, the position on a policy basis right now, without the, the information of cost or anything? We just, we've looked at this, Lauren, and we just disagree with this on a policy basis? Then that's fair, then, then it's a no.
Got it.
If it's, let's, we want more information, then it's, okay, what is the cost? We need to go out and find that. And then, once we have that, then we can talk about it in relation to everything else within the budget or other future decisions.
Okay.
Anybody else? Amanda?
I just want to clarify too. I understand by saying that we're, this is an internal thing, we're talking about having someone who already works for the department take this on, so it might be, you know, this much of an increase, not like a whole new position.
Yeah, that's exactly the way we've.
Okay. I just want to make sure I got that.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to compliment Lauren, because I think this is such an inclusive plan and, and something to be admired. So I thought I'd mention that.
Thank you. It was a team effort, truly.
So we have a motion by Manke, second by Higgins. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. New business. Items for discussion and/or possible action. A, request from the police department to purchase equipment and address billing needs And the chief is not here, but I think Martin might speak to this.
Yeah, I can speak on it. Yeah, chief is at a training this evening and for the next couple of days, so she wasn't able to, to make the, the meeting tonight. So they, chief reached out to me a few weeks ago on these needs here that are before you, a couple of equipment items and some, some building items, and wanted to know if she could bring these forward for the village board to consider. And I guess in terms of, of dollars and, and where we might get these things, so this past year in 2024, we, we are going to produce a budgetary surplus for a couple of factors. Number one is in the Police Department on the expenditure side. We, of course, had a number of vacancies throughout the year that we budgeted for and then didn't spend those dollars to the tune of about a, almost $300,000 in the Police Department budget that wasn't spent. And then on the revenue side, we had more investment income than we budgeted for, which was something we talked about during the budget process. And then we also had a lot more revenue from development fees and building permits than, than we had anticipated. So we're, we'll produce a, a bit of a surplus from 2024. And so typically what, what's happened, if you've been on the board these last few years is, you know, the auditors will come in May or June, and they'll talk about our financial statements for, for 2024. We've gotten that all squared away. And so what has happened in recent years is we've had at least some surplus. And then what we do is we ask the board to transfer that surplus to different needs, different things that we have going on. Primarily, and this is what we have in one of our financial policies, is if we have excess fund balance in our general fund due to a surplus in, in the budget, we ideally like to put those towards equipment and building maintenance items. So things that are minor generally in cost, that are one time, that we don't necessarily want to budget for, or take out debt for because the items are so small, and then taking out the debt is a much more significant cost in terms of overhead. But then also, for some of these items, you're, you're amortizing costs in debt over 20 years for items that may only last for five years or less in some cases. So we don't want to be paying debt for something that is no longer used. So ideally, we, we try to find these ways where we have these surpluses, where we can use those dollars for these items. And so that's most likely what will happen here in a month or two. When the auditors come, we'll ask you to transfer those funds, those different capital accounts to use for these things. And so these needs will, will obviously still be there. And if, if they're still there after this conversation, they'll obviously go into the capital budget for future years. So we, we have the dollars to be able to make these purchases. And most of those dollars are from the police budget being under budget because of vacancies.
Okay. Lynn?
Are we doing questions right now? Did we get a?
Let's get, let's get a motion.
I was just going to say, okay, I'll move.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
All right. Now you, please go ahead.
Okay. A couple of quick things about this. I actually just spoke to chief a couple of days ago while she was on this training and promised her that I would bring this up in terms of this UTV, as to why the department needs it. She wanted that to be reiterated, which is that there are some complex areas in the village for the Police Department to access, specifically wooded areas, one being behind the middle school, that the department has sort of determined that they would need something unique in order to get back there quickly, should there be a large safety event, or really any safety situation in that area. And so that's one of the very specific reasons why they're looking into a vehicle such as this. So I thought I would just add that because I promised her I would do that. My other question slash comment is the LED light bulbs, the AC unit, some of those things, I think might have, the Focus on Energy program might have some rebate incentive pieces. And I'm wondering if I or somebody could work with, the, the reason why I bring this up is because Focus on Energy came to the Sustainability Committee a couple of months ago to present about some of the opportunities that we may have. At the time, we didn't have any specific needs. And so I have that contact information, thought maybe we could reach out to see if there was any financial support we could get from a program like that. Thoughts?
Yeah, I think that's, that's totally fine. And I think, yeah, as, as chair of the Sustainability Committee, I think that's totally appropriate.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Tim?
I just wanted to clarify. I think if I read this correctly, the, you know, the lion's share of the money would be for the radios, and those are likely to be an expense we would be incurring over the next few years anyway. So it's really just advancing it?
Correct, yeah. And I believe there was an attempt to, to buy, there was some that were approved in the 2025 budget, but they have a bit of a deal that they are, have available to them this year if they just purchase all, all of them which are, are needed.
So it's pretty wise.
Amanda?
So I had a question about the, the launcher. But she's, the, the chief isn't here to answer it. Yeah, I was just curious about what that looked like and why that was necessary. I'm sure there's a perfectly good reason, but I don't know. I, I'm always trying to balance the, the militarization of police forces versus police safety of our officers, right? You know, but, so I just was, I had a question, but it's, it, it won't stop me from voting for this, I guess, but I just want us to be aware of what these things are and what their purpose is.
The, I, I believe the launcher is actually a less lethal device itself. So it's the, and I might be misspeaking here, but it's the, the device that shoots, I think it's beanbags essentially, which is, is designed to deliver a less lethal projectile to immobilize somebody rather than an alternative.
Okay. And that makes sense with what I know about Chief Pagan cough, so I'm good with this. Thank you.
I would like to amend the motion by striking the ATV again, the UTV. The reason I say that is, one, is these items are, obviously there's safety equipment here and, and building upgrades, but I'm not sure it's a good time to be adding a new permanent piece of expensive equipment, given the message we were recently given by the voters. But I would encourage the chief to reapply for the grant next year. So I'm offering as an amendment that we'd strike the UTV. And there's no second, okay.
I'll make a second on that.
All right.
You will make a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss it.
Go ahead. Yep.
Yeah, I, I guess, I understand, I'm kind of on the fence here because I understand the wanting to, to save the money. I guess I would hope that it, the Police Department would use it for more than just those specific areas. I mean, if they're going to use it for other purposes, I don't know, Summer Fest, if they have to get someplace quick, but you know, that's a once a year event. Like, I guess I, I would want to know that it wasn't just for, for those reasons. Yeah, go ahead.
When I was talking with Jenny and Rudy about this, the other thing that they did mention is that this would allow them quicker access to the bike trail. If there's an incident out on the bike trail, the rotary bike trail, it's a lot quicker way to get out there than using the bicycle police officers that we have. So that was one of the other things that they mentioned that it could be used for too.
I don't, I'm not sure it was for Jason and Lynn.
All right, so I, I, I am hesitant to vote in favor of the, the change just because we as a board haven't set priorities for how we want to really manage funds. And care, is, this being a capital expense, the, the pinch that's going to come down the road at some point is going to be operational, and I'm not sure how much this would increase operational costs before we're able to make those decisions. So I think the, the benefit for public safety, in my mind, outweighs the, what I'm assuming a minor increase in the operational costs, which would just be maintenance of the vehicle.
Okay. Lynn?
Yeah, I also am opposed to the amendment only because, well, for multiple reasons. But one of the main reasons is that I think that the, the department has proven to us time and time again to be great stewards of the, the equipment that they've been given. Our drone program is one of the best in this area. If you speak to any other local police departments, they're often asking us to come and support them with our drone program. We've allowed officers to grow within that. Our bicycle program, the less lethal program, things that we have invested time and money into. The Police Department has brought it back to us, showing great care and attention to it. I also think that what we're looking at here is utilizing funds that are simply there because they don't have the staffing. And if there's any ability for us to provide materials to help with a staffing shortage, I'm always going to be in favor of that because the reality is, is that I can't recruit for the Police Department, but I can help them get to specific situations faster with less people needed. And if, if that is a benefit, then, then I would support that wholeheartedly.
Jason and Tom?
And then I do want to add, so the board and public's aware, the red, white, and blue event, which happens every year, which is an appreciation event put on by community members, gathered, and I'm a part of that team, and the Masons and the Optimists and Eastern Star, they also raise funds for equipment for both our fire EMS and police, police folks, and are continuing with that this year to help with costs like this and future maintenance costs as well. So this isn't something that just the, the village board is, is supporting. And I know they've been trying to help raise money for that UTV for a while too.
Tom?
I guess, I would like to speak in favor of the amendment, just from the standpoint that whether we do it now or do it later, it's still going to be about the same cost. The other items on here are cost savings, or safety issues, or here's a, here's a great way to, to a great buy and services over. And that's not necessarily the case in the UT, the UTV. We don't have a, a good deal that's hanging there, that we get a special deal right now. And there's nothing lost or gained by setting this aside for the time being.
Great.
I would argue this is a safety issue. I, as a lover of all of the trails, and we continue to add to those, I'm like, I definitely for having police be able to respond in a quicker stance for, again, speaking from a female who likes to go on these trails in Oregon, and that's, I'll just leave it at that. I think that this is necessary, and I think waiting is only a safety concern.
Okay.
So you're voting on the amendment first?
That's right, yeah. But first, I was going to make a comment. At some point, we have to decide wants versus needs. And we've been fortunate, I've been fortunate all the time I've been on this board, fortunate on boards I've been in the past, there always seemed to be enough money. But suddenly there's not. I don't want to sound like a lecturer, but at some point we have to say, we need this, we want this, and we're going to have to find that space. With that, I will call the vote on the amendment. Oh, make this a roll call, though.
Oh, boy.
Sorry. It doesn't have to be.
No, it's all right.
I'll call it. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye, aye.
This is?
This is the amendment.
Amendment.
Just the amendment.
Removing the UTV.
Removing the UTV.
Okay.
Okay, everyone got that? So those in favor, say aye, aye.
Removing it? Aye.
Aye. Those, yes. Those opposed?
No.
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 Okay, in the chair's opinion, the motion failed. Now we'll go to the main motion. And that was made by Lynn and Tim. Further discussion on the main motion. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes six to one. Thank you all. It was a good discussion. Okay, item nine B, 2026 budget planning and village board strategic planning.
So we talked a little bit about this at the, the reorganizational meeting. So we have these two processes that sort of align a little bit, at least at the moment. We, of course, had our two-year strategic plan that we did in the summer of 2023. So that will be coming due for a time to renew that if we so desire to do so. And then, of course, we have our, our 26 budget that's coming up. And we did pass the budget schedule that we have in the packet here at the reorganizational meeting as well. And so at the, at that meeting, there was some discussion about perhaps setting a, a separate meeting of the village board to talk about these two issues in a little bit more detail outside of a, a meeting where we have as much in a variety of stuff that we have during a regular meeting, to give it a little bit more time and, and thought. So, of course, happy to have the board and have that discussion about just the logistics of that. And then happy to have any comments or, or questions answered at this time about that.
It's about how much time are we talking about, a half, four, three, four hours, a whole day? A couple meetings, I, you know, what's, what's, it's a relevant question.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's, I don't know. I, I guess, once we get into it, we may figure that out a little bit. I mean, a lot of that's going to be contingent on, on the board too, as far as how, how much time and space do you want to give to, to that conversation, how much time you need for that conversation? Obviously, we don't really know that until we sort of get into it. I, I would think at least an initial meeting, expecting an hour, maybe two hours. And then from that point, I think you'll have a sense of, okay, we need to have at least a couple more meetings or, you know, a couple more hours.
I guess, I have a suggestion then. I guess to start the initial discussion and maybe just the first one, or it might be a series of the meeting, I guess, Mondays are already kind of blocked off on my calendar typically. Other events don't get, seem to go get scheduled in on it. So like on a Monday that is off from our regular board meeting, holding a special meeting on a, a Monday, having the discussion. And I guess the, the first one of that would be available.
Not public safety.
Yeah.
The 12th? Well, technically, the 28th. I don't know that we'd be ready by the 28th, would. I guess the other question I have on it, Martin, is how does this, how does this tie in with all the extra things you're carrying right now with the lease out of the office and having to answer, you know, questions about Heights offenses?
Yeah, so I, I haven't given too much thought, I haven't had the chance to give it too much thought in terms of, you know, options as far as the budget, but also options as far as the plan. But I guess from what I see in terms of timing, I think for the, the strategic plan part of this, we have time. I mean, there, there is no crisis necessarily, right? We don't, we don't have an imbalanced budget, we're not dealing with a deficit. What, what we're dealing with is we hold things back from our budget, which in turn, our services have to be delivered with the same or less resources year after year after year. So what's happening is we're just, we're stretching out our resources to the point where something, we need to do something to try to prioritize or. Something, we need to do something to try to prioritize or um try to use those resources in a way that are um. More aligned with whatever our priorities are. So, you know, we're not dealing necessarily with, you know, a budgetary deficit heading into the twenty-six budget. So I think from a, a strategic plan perspective, um, what I see is maybe try, trying to go all in on that process. In terms of, let's spend a serious amount of time on, on this process. And perhaps even bring in somebody, a consultant, to facilitate that for us. Let's potentially consider public input as, as, as part of that process. Um, let's give that process the time it needs to do it right. And if that takes six months, if that takes a year, then so be it. Cause I think. We don't wanna make decisions rashly, right? We don't wanna do something in the next couple of months as a result of. You know, the outcome of the referendum that in a year we're like, why did we do that? Why did we make that decision? And, and there was no, and it was needless because we don't have to do it. We, our budget is balanced. And again. There's some things that we can talk about as far as that, the budget, but we're not in sort of a, a huge fiscal crisis. So I think, you know, and we can talk about this as, and when we set this meeting up and I can get some time to, to marinate on it a little bit more. Um, cause as you said, my day job is now Elise's job, so uh. I, I, I think we just need to really take that process really seriously and just really invest some serious resources into it. I, I think there's a, there's sort of a, a, a vision of what the elected officials might have, what the staff might have. But clearly there's a vision that's different out in the public, and I think there needs to be some alignment um on that. And I, I think we need to do it right, and I think we need to do it for um something that is for the long term. Um, and I think it's, gets down to questions of what are we doing here? What, what is our purpose as an organization? What are we supposed to be delivering? Um, and that in turn, I think is going to help prioritize our services, right? So out of that conversation, it's going to be, okay, we all know that we like this and we need to invest things into this. And we heard that we don't really care so much about this. Okay, now it's taking, it's those reallocations of resources. And so then that's gonna funnel down into your budget process, into your capital plan. Um, over the coming years. And so that's really the um. Advice that I would give, and, and we could certainly talk about it as we get into the, into that meeting that we're gonna schedule. As far as the twenty-six budget is concerned, I think it looks, that process looks a little bit more like what we did for this, this year, for twenty twenty-five in terms of just. Look, we're gonna try to keep things status quo, right? We're gonna give maybe a certain percentage uh for staff increases. Um, we're gonna try to, you know, find different ways to, to be efficient with dollars, just like we do from budget to budget. Uh, and I think for this budget process, I think we look at um more specifically just time. Where can we save time from, for our staff? And so I think. Asking staff, asking departments, where are some thing, what are some things that you're doing that um take up a lot of time? And maybe don't serve what you feel like is your mission or like your purpose or what, you know, some of the core services um that you're supposed to be delivering are. And so are there some, is there some direction that the village board can give our departments to say, we give you permission, right? You can stop doing that. And when people complain, you have that. Decision that's coming down from the policymakers so that they know that they can come talk to you about that. That way, we know as staff that we have good direction and that we are faced with choices about resource deficiencies. We have some direction on, okay, the village board said this, I can pull back on this. So I think that's a little bit more of what the conversation for the twenty twenty-six budget will look like. And in the meantime, we can get our heads on straight about what are we doing here as an organization and what our priorities are. And then hopefully out of that, we can roll into a twenty-seven or twenty-eight budget. Um, trying to implement that vision, those goals into actual operations.
Uh, Jason and Amanda.
So, uh, thank you, Martin. I, I really think that going through that type of process is going to be important and key for us. Um, to make informed decisions as a village board moving forward and to take as much time as. Necessary over the next several to six months to figure this out in the, the two-year strategic uh plan. And this, this will help us um look at things, I think, from a long-term basis. Uh, the impact that the, that our decisions will have uh in making priorities on the community. Um, um, and help with that wants versus needs that, that Phil talked about. Um, and really having this discussion as a board, but also in conversation with village staff and with the public, I think would be great. Um, a consultant who's done this type of work before would probably be, be helpful if you, if you, uh, if there's someone with that specialty. Um, but, but then we are also able to say, you know what? Um, because of funding restrictions, we're not gonna do X, Y, Z, but we are going to do A, B, C. Um, because of the direction and, and kind of meld um what we heard following the referendum. Uh, with the needs of the community over the long term and the things that um need to be provided for um in the community. By the local government as well and try and get all on the same page with that.
Amanda.
All right, so just to get us back to Tom's suggestion. Um, I like the idea of, of having ongoing discussions over multiple um Mondays, like second Mondays, I guess it is. Um, to have these discussions. We don't have to solve it all in one night, but to give ourselves an hour or two on the, those off Mondays. Is a good way to have an ongoing discussion, so.
Uh, Lynn.
I'm, I'm going to respectfully, very respectfully, Amanda, disagree. Um, only because I. Two reasons. First of all, busy and taking multiple Mondays to talk about something that we just need to rip the Band-Aid off and make some tough decisions. I, I would just rather get into a meeting, take your shoes off and let's go. Like, let's just make some decisions. You don't have to take your shoes off, but like, I get serious when I take my shoes off. I don't know why you said that loud. Anyway.
On TV.
I know, sorry.
Redge meeting, but go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, I just think that I come back to, to what I feel like I've heard in the last couple of months from the public, which is. This board needs to start making some tough decisions. And we're giving, as the community has sort of said, we're giving you the permission to make those tough decisions now. Go, now do it. I don't wanna put more on the staff. I don't wanna ask for more time for them to whittle down a list that it's already been whittled down. I think we just need to sit down and say, and like, I agree with you, Martin. I, I don't know that we have to make long-term decisions. We just may, need to make some decisions about what are our priorities for this next year? And where are we gonna take some funds to, to make those things happen? Or how are we gonna cut some things so that we get time back? For the staff to do the things that we say are our priorities? And then throughout the year, have listening sessions and have discussions for that long-term planning. But I guess for twenty twenty-six, I think we should just have a marathon meeting and get it done.
Uh, Jason.
So I, I have a question because I, I heard two different things and I think we might be ta, talking about two different things. One is um the budget process for twenty twenty-six, I heard is gonna go forward as normal. Um, and, and, and like it did last year. And, and therefore there aren't going to be ne, repeated because there's not a budget crisis, I heard, uh, from what I heard said, uh, leading into twenty twenty-six. But rather it's the more, I mean, two years isn't really long-term, but we'll call it long-term. Uh, medium-term, the medium-term decisions that we need to have that discussion, input and conversation about that, that, that I hear you saying that. You know what? We, we need to ha, have the, the spaces to do that. Um, so, so I, I just wanna be clear, we're, we're talking, that we're not confusing two, two things.
Martin, can you clarify for us? Cause maybe we did interpret this differently. Are, do we need to make decisions for twenty twenty-six?
Uh, at this meeting that we wanna schedule, uh, not necessarily. Um, I, I think, and let me preface by saying, there's, there's a multitude of ways that you can do this, right? I mean, there's no right answer, right? So I'm, I'm giving sort of some guidance here on what could be a good approach, but. Don't take that as gospel, okay? I mean, you can come up with your ideas and, you know, it might be a better way to do it, so. In my mind, I see a little bit sort of how we did it last year where. Uh, we did have a couple of village board meetings in April and May and June, uh, where we talked about twenty twenty-five budget direction. And what came out of that was a resolution of. Uh, here are the things that we're going to do as far as direction. And it was A, B, C, X, Y, Z. It was, you know, things like, we're gonna do, we're gonna hold uh the village staff to, I think it was a two and a half percent increase last year. Um, which was a step on our compensation plan. So we kept it there for that. Um, we said that we wanted to do the levy limit exception for fire EMS, you know, so there was. Um, a few different things that were in that list that essentially. In the vision of the twenty twenty-five budget, it was, we wanna try to keep things status quo. We don't wanna add anything new. We just wanna continue maintaining the services that we're providing. As reasonably as we possibly can, understanding that, yes, we are continuing to stretch our staff, our resources in order to try to deliver these things. So that's sort of what I would see again for this year is, and we, and we should have that conversation about, you know, what is that direction? And I think, you know, I can certainly give, you know, those uh ideas and we can certainly inquire with, with department heads as well. But I do see as part of that uh direction, you know, in my mind, a resolution with that list. But one of those things being, we wanna go to department heads, request from department heads. Give us some things about efficiency, especially in terms of time. So what are some things you're doing? Give us a list of some things that you feel that we could give you. Essentially give you permission to stop doing or, or do less of, so that we can try to do some efficiency with our, our resources to help. Uh, with that strain that's happening. So I see that, and again, that, that conversation could be, maybe it is just one meeting. Uh, and it's maybe, you know, a pretty quick meeting at that. Uh, the strategic plan part of it, um, I think at this stage, I think it's more of. A um process discussion. So if we are, if we wanna do what I described is, is kind of going all in and, and doing a really robust process. And we wanna bring in a consultant, maybe that's, that's it for the conversation. Maybe it's, we wanna do a request for. My, I think here you wanna do a request for qualifications. Essentially, we're looking for somebody to help. Figure out how to do a strategic planning process and go out and see who is interested and then have a conversation with. You know, whoever is somebody that we wanna bring in and to talk to us about. How do you, what is, what's gonna be an effective way to run an organizational strategic planning process for a local government? Uh, is it going to involve the public? In what ways? How is that gonna, so. Working with potentially somebody to design that entire process from the ground up so that it results in deliverable that we want.
Go ahead.
Sorry, so I guess just to clear up your question to me, Jason, is that, because I do remember these meetings, we did the second lieutenant posit, like, we. Made a decision last spring. While I agree that we are not in a budget crisis, I think we have to look at twenty twenty-six. In terms of, is there anything there that we do want to prioritize, deprioritize for this sh, very short-term, one year? And I'm saying that that should happen in one meeting, that we should have that conversation. And then, once we feel good about twenty twenty-six, having that long-term discussion either with other people or ourselves.
That makes sense to me. So, uh, forgive me, I'm, I missed the first part. So is our intent to make this as part of a board meeting? Are we gonna have a special meeting?
The, the suggestion that was in the discussion, there's no, there's been no motion made, it was to hold a meeting on a Monday night. And kind of thrash through, through things our, our own here first. And then I think the thought right now and the way that, I heard the conversation seeming to go, is then we would do a more robust strategic process at another time.
Okay, and this, uh, this, but it would be on one of our off Mondays, is that?
Off Monday.
Okay, so then are we at the point where we wanna schedule that? I mean, makes sense?
Yeah, I think May twelfth was, was thrown out, or was that just something I thought in my head? That would be the next available.
Correct.
Off Monday.
Is that enough time? Yeah, do, do you need to prepare for that in any way? That meeting, like, is that enough time?
Yes.
Good question.
No, but, uh, well, it, I, I think the level of. Prep right now is not overly substantial. Um, but coming out of that meeting, it might. Um, so, yeah, I, I'm, I'm good with that date.
Eight twelve.
Unless, but I thought I heard somebody.
I will not be here, but that's.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Um.
I will be at my house, sorry guys. I got ten virtually. I mean, I feel like your input would be important.
Yeah.
I would rather do it when we can all be here.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, that would be, uh, the twenty-sixth then. That's Memorial Day. Oh, well, you know. They're all Sunday to me.
Otherwise, June ninth? Is that what we're looking at? Is that too late?
Too late?
No, not necessarily. Um, really, what date was that?
I mean, there.
June ninth.
We have four other weeknights to choose from.
Yeah, we, we could do a different night.
We just did the reorg meeting on a Tuesday.
That's true.
Yeah.
We did a strategic planning on a Wednesday in twenty-three. How do you know that? Cause I looked it up.
Oh, okay.
I was like, wow.
Said magic. We would have believed you.
I'd say also the, the, the third and fourth Thursdays of the month, usually we don't have any meetings scheduled.
Let's fill them up.
Yep.
Except for transportation.
Except for transportation.
Oh, well, then, but, but Tuesday, well, what about the, initially, we talked about the twelfth, so what about the thirteenth? Does that work for anyone or everyone?
That, I can't do the thirteenth.
Okay. Um, fifteenth?
Yeah, and I'm, that, that, the rest of that week, other than that Monday, I'm booked.
Oh, okay, um.
Twentieth or the twenty-second?
Yep, twentieth or twenty-second? Either one will work for me.
I prefer twentieth.
Twentieth?
Twentieth.
Going once?
Twentieth.
Okay, the twentieth?
May twentieth.
Five P M?
Awesome.
Got it.
Got it? Everybody? Need a motion?
May twentieth, five P M.
Yeah, you need a motion on that. Special meeting motion, probably.
Okay, if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's have a motion on that, please.
I'll make a motion that we have a special budget meeting on May the twentieth at five P M.
Second.
Second. I would just, this'll be a public meeting, it's not a closed session, just for the public to know. So all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, did you get that?
I did.
All right.
And I will send you all a calendar reminder.
Okay.
Thank you.
If, if we think it's gonna be particularly long, we could all chip in for pizza. Or subs or whatever. I'm just saying, I mean.
It's not a bad idea.
Just saying.
Yeah.
We should think about it.
Is public comment allowed during that meeting? Because it is a public meeting?
Sure.
It can be.
We can put it on the end.
Maybe worth, can, can I make a, try make a motion to request that?
I think that's part of our normal meeting procedure, so I think that you don't have to do that, but it's a good idea to include that. Okay, uh, thank you. Item ten. Reports of village officers, department heads and consultants, information only, no action by the village board will be taken. A village administrator report. Questions, comments? Uh, ten B, a finance director report, billing permits, impact fees and connection fees collected. Ending March twenty twenty-five. Elise is here if you have questions. No, okay, um, 11, announcements and miscellaneous business. A, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business. Village board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion of the, or action of the body shall occur. Let's go with the, uh, uh, staff or department heads, please.
I'm just an invite tonight, if you haven't eaten, um, there's a fundraiser for the Friends of the Library, which supports all of our library programming. Um, so if you're able to stop by before 8:00, um, to support that, we'd appreciate it, but if not, we understand.
What, where is that?
Uh, Culvers, they're donating 10% of sales to the Friends of the Library.
I thought maybe it was your house. Uh, anyone else?
I'm just, um, reminding the public, as well as anybody on the board here, that Open Book is Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Um, it's on the calendar, um, Wednesday, we will, we'll have assessors here from, at the village hall from 1:00 to 4:00. And then again on Thursday from 9:00 AM to noon and 1:00 PM to 4:00.
Anybody else? Village board members. Jason.
Well, I mentioned the red, white and blue event, so I'll give an early, um, save the date for that. That's gonna be on August 28th from 4:00 to 7:35 PM, and yes, I, 7:35 is a very specific time, but that's when they set, set the end. Uh, there'll be meal, uh, it's gonna be a time to honor those who serve on the fire, um, police and EMS um, groups and, and their families, and they'll be getting a free meal. Um, public will be able to purchase a meal, um, also soliciting donations, um, for that equipment for all departments. So if you, you're interested in that, just let me know, and it'll be at, uh, Triangle Park.
And I will mention, I usually speak at that event, and I'll be on vacation, so I'll be soliciting volunteers. Or you can draw straws. Uh, any other board members? Tim.
Uh, the DCCBA annual meeting is coming up next month, and I think if somebody of us go, we have to notice that, yes?
I did notice it.
Okay. I'm planning to attend, so.
Yeah, I, I'll be there. Anyone else? Okay, I'll run down the list then, uh. One, the village president appointment of Marty Verment to the Board of Police Commissioners to serve a five-year term, 2025 to 2030. Two, J.C. Community Park tree planting event Saturday, April 26th, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Uh, three, Oregon Earth Day Festival, April 26th, 2025, from noon to 4:00, St. John's Lutheran Church, 625 East Netherwood Street. Four, our Oregon Area Senior Center Bratbush, May 9th, from 10:00 to 1. I'm sorry, from 11:00 to 1, 11:00 to 1, thank you for catching that. Five, proclamation recognizing municipal treasures appreciation week in Wisconsin between 2025, April 20, 2025, April 26th, 2025. This is our typical practice, we'll read one line, so I'll start. Proclamation, whereas the Office of the Municipal Treasurer is a time-honored and vital part of the local government that impacts the day-to-day life of citizens throughout the state, and?
Whereas the municipal treasurers provide the necessary financial information to governing bodies and agencies at the local county and state levels, and?
Whereas municipal treasurers administer the procedures and keep the financial records that allow governing bodies to carry out their public function efficiently and confidently, and?
Whereas all municipal treasures are the official custodians responsible for proper management and investment of public funds, and?
Whereas Wisconsin's municipal treasures and county treasures work together to collect all property taxes for their own municipalities and counties, as well as their local schools, technical colleges and the state, and?
Whereas municipal treasures continually strive to improve the administration of the responsibilities of the Office of the Municipal Treasurer through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and conferences across Wisconsin, and?
Whereas Governor Tony Evers signed a proclamation on March 28th, 2025, declaring April 20th through 2026, 2025, as Municipal Treasures Appreciation Week throughout the state of Wisconsin and the village of Oregon, further extends its appreciation to village treasurer Lisa Nowinski, deputy treasurer Candy Jones, and to all municipal treasures for the important work they do for communities throughout the state.
Okay, and, uh, next is, uh, proclamation recognizing Arbor Day, Friday, April 25th, 2025. Do we wanna read this? Yeah, okay, so.
Love trees.
Yay, trees.
Yeah. I will sign it. Okay, and, uh, let's see. Future agenda items, this item gives village board members the opportunity to place a topic on a future agenda for discussion and/or potential action. Lynn.
Can we, uh, put a discussion item on a future agenda to discuss the idea of a public restroom on the southwest side of the senior center building area? Complex?
Without objection? So, and then? Anybody else? Okay, item 12, as ARP is, is finished, we are adjourned.